Okay, this is the common council meeting to be held Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This meeting, who would you please call the role?
Alderperson Collins.
Present.
Alderperson Bailey.
Present.
Alderperson Castner.
Present.
Alderperson Akers.
Present.
Alderperson Sarian.
Present.
Item B, there isn't an opening prayer this evening. Item C is a pledge of allegiance. If you would all join me. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You'll have to forgive me, too, if you see me wincing. I screwed up my lower back this morning, so it's nothing personal. D, approval of the June 15th, 2021 minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderperson Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E, approval of the June 29th, 2021, special common council minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Alderperson Collins, second by Alderperson Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, approval of the July 6th, 2021, special common council minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Alderperson Collins, is there a second?
Second.
By Alderperson Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderperson Akers was excused from that meeting, so she should be marked as abstention. Item G is the mayor's report. Just wanted to point out two things. I think you saw it. We received a grant in the amount of $100,000 from the Great Lakes Trust Fund for improvements at Honey Creek this week. That was a great thing. We're also in line to receive another $50,000. Wanted to again thank Festival Foods. They had their grand opening last week. We received $10,000, a check towards our fireworks this year, which many told me were fantastic. I certainly thought they were.
I thought it was 15.
That was for a bike trail.
15.
Well, 15, well, actually, you're stand corrected, $15,000 towards the fireworks and another $10,000 for the bike trail path that will extend beginning next year. We're starting to build it from 60th to 105th Street in the ATC right-of-way. So they are donating $10,000 for a rest area near the beginning of that trail.
And Forest Home Avenue-ish.
Forest Home Avenue-ish, which is in, and the plan was presented and it looked fantastic. Also, wanted to thank Meyer. We had our first Friday night concert series. Almighty Vinyl played at the amp. We ran out of refreshments and had some cute computer glitches with the, with the point-of-sale computer that we're working through, but it was a fantastic event. It was extremely well-attended, so the vendors were really happy and there were a lot of people that were thrilled to be there. There's another one coming up. I don't have the date in front of me. It's coming up a week from Friday, two weeks from Friday?
It's a week from Friday.
30th, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Are there any Aldermanic reports this evening? Alderperson Bailey, recognizing, of course, that there's a bucks game at 8:00 and not trying to short the public hearing in any way, shape, or form.
All I want to say, Mayor Nieski, is that we had a tree commission meeting. We're on schedule to plant 400 or 500 trees this year to replace our canopy that's been decimated by the Emerald Ashbore.
I guess I'd point out, too, that many of the 400 or 500 trees are a result of a grant that we we received from MMSD, so. Alder, any other Aldermanic reports this evening?
No.
Announcements? I don't have any. Citizen commentary? So there's the white sheet down there. Can you grab that, Andrew, maybe? If you're here to speak at the public hearing, if you're here with regard to the gun shop, you don't have to speak during citizen commentary. Your comments will be heard during the public hearing. Does that, there's nobody? Is there somebody? Nobody on there, okay. Fantastic. Okay, moving along to public hearings. The first public hearing, item K1, is a public hearing on an ordinance to adopt a land use map amendment to the city of Greenfield's comprehensive plan for the property located at 6944 West Forest Home Avenue from neighborhood business office to single-family, and an ordinance to amend the official Greenfield zoning map by rezoning the property located at 6944 West Forest Home from neighborhood's business office to single-family. The requested action is to approve the ordinance to adopt the land use map amendment and to approve an ordinance to amend the official Greenfield zoning map by rezoning the property located at that address from neighborhood business office to single-family.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this is a property on Forest Home Avenue that's currently zoned C1, Neighborhood Commercial District, so our lowest, least intense commercial district. The applicant purchased the property to use it for an electrical contractor business, which isn't a permitted use or a special use in the C1 zoning district, so the applicant decided to list the property for sale. He's been getting a lot, a lot more inquiries to sell it as a residential property rather than as a commercial property, so he is seeking to amend the land use map and rezone the property to be a single-family residential property. The parcel currently does contain the commercial property that formerly was a single-family residence. There's also a detached garage on site. Currently, the land use is neighborhood business office, which supports the commercial zoning designation. The applicant is wishing to amend that to be single-family, which does match up with the properties to the south of there on Forest Home. The property's bounded by a multifamily residential complex to the west. The property to the north is the We Energies right-of-way, so it isn't, it doesn't abut any, any other single-family residences. So they're wishing to amend the land use designation to single-family and to rezone it to the R4A, Single Family and Two-Family Residential Conservation District, which again matches the properties, residential properties, south on Forest Home Avenue. The request shouldn't negatively affect any neighboring properties. The residential use should be less intense than a commercial use. Plan Commission recommended approval at the May 11th meeting, and so far there have been no letters of objection received to date.
And it's a single-family house?
Correct.
It was prior to this.
Is anyone here to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this requested change? Is anyone here to speak for, against, or for information purposes concerning this change? Yes?
Just that I'm here on behalf of the owner?
Uh-huh. Could you, yeah, if you could come up, that would be great. If you could state your name and your address?
My name is Carrie Lemke, and the address of the property is 6944 West Forest Home Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of the client, and I am for the zoning change.
Okay.
Actually, I'm the realtor. We do have an accepted offer for residential use, just shortage of homes. Lot of activity with residential. We couldn't sell it as commercial.
Great, thank you.
Can be a nice bike trail next to it.
Yeah, so the $10,000 bike weigh station is, is right behind.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Alderperson Castner to close, second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning of this property.
I'll second.
Wait one second.
And adopt the ordinance?
Adopt the ordinance, yes.
Full.
Yes.
A and B.
Who made that motion? I'm sorry. By Alderperson Akers, was there, second by Alderperson Collins? Because it's a change, would you please call? This is to approve items A and B.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
A motion carries unanimously. Item K2 is a public hearing on the special use permit for Danny's Massage, a proposed massage therapy business located at 5170 South 76th Street, submitted by Danny Diaz de Jesus, doing business as Danny's Massage. This is a suite within the old Pier 1 building.
Yeah. He is, the applicant is requesting the special use for the massage use. He is renting one suite within the former Pier 1, which is now My Salon Suite. His proposed hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily, based on appointments. He anticipates having around three to five appointments per day. He'll be the sole operator for the massage use in that suite, and he does have three years of experience. Services include general massage, prenatal reflexology, sports, and therapeutic massage. The off-street parking, per the code, for the massage use is three parking spaces. The off-street parking required for all of the other uses for the suites are 101. There are 47 parking spaces on-site. The owner feels that the parking should be adequate, just based on how the appointments are scheduled. The parking lot shouldn't, shouldn't be overcrowded, and the common council can waive the parking shortage. Plan Commission recommended approval at the June 8th meeting, and no letters of objection have been received.
Is there anyone that would like to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? Is the applicant here tonight? Is Danny here? No. Are you here? You're in favor of it, right?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Alderperson Castner to close the public hearing, is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Alderperson Collins to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the special use permit for Danny's Massage, located at 5170 South 76th Street, and approve the site plan review, which was, has been approved through numerous tenants that have gone through the property.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Bailey to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Castner, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3 is a public hearing on the ordinance to amend Section 21.04.06.03 of the municipal code pertaining to all other amusement and recreation industries, firearm ranges being permitted as a special use in a C4 Regional Business District and C5 Freeway Business District as a special use permit for Shoot Point Blank, a proposed firearm range and gun shop to be located at 10557 West Leighton Avenue, submitted by Ken Knuckles, doing business as Development Management Group LLC, and Brad Cobb, doing business as Compton Addy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this is the subject parcel. It's currently a vacant parcel located on the south side of Leighton Avenue, between the Realtor office and, and the car wash. The applicant, Compton Addy, has offered to purchase the property for constructing and establishing an indoor firing range and retail firearms sales, so retail component as well. The property is zoned C4 Regional Business District. The sporting goods stores, so the retail aspect of it, requires the special use under the C4 zoning district. However, the firing range is currently only allowed in the M1 Light Manufacturing District, so the applicant is requesting that there's an ordinance amendment allowing in the 713-990 NAICS Code, which is the all-other amusement and recreation. They're wishing to amend the zoning code to allow the shooting club in the C4 and C5 zoning districts, so that the use would be a special use in those, in the C4 and C5 zoning districts. The NAICS Code for that 713-990 includes 108 other items, uses, that would remain as a special use in the M1 Light Manufacturing District. However, just this single use as the shooting club, recreational, would be, would be changed to be a special use in the C4 and C5 zoning district. There are currently only four parcels that are zoned M1 Light Manufacturing in the city, and with changing this, it would allow the firing ranges to be in approximately 140 parcels that are zoned C4 or C5. So Compton Addy would be the landlord of the 1.55 acre site, and Shoot Point Blank would be the tenant. The typical lease, Shoot Point Blank executes on these locations, is based on an initial 20-year term. Shoot Point Blank opened its first store in 2012 and has developed nearly 30 locations in seven states. The proposed location would have 14 gun range lanes, two classrooms, the retail space, and a viewing area, and they anticipate the construction cost to be around $1.7 million. The proposed hours of operation would be 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday, and they anticipate, anticipate peak hours being weekday afternoons from 5:00 to 8:00, and then Saturday and Sunday midday, 11:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and 12:00 to 4:00 on Sunday. They anticipate having four to 12 employees on-site at any given time, and a total of 25 to 27 employees. The proposed building would be located 50 feet setback from the right-of-way line on, on West Leighton Avenue. Per the code, that would require 93 parking spaces, but the, the applicant, the developer, feels that 58 of onsite parking spaces would be adequate, and the common council may waive the parking shortage. The city forester has been, will need to walk the site. It's pretty heavily wooded in the rear, so the applicant will need to work with the city forester to discuss the tree preservation policy. This is just a cut sheet of the site lighting and the dumpster enclosure, which would be constructed out of brick. The facades would be, it's a block and brick masonry building on all four facades. There is some HVAC system, systems that are located on the ground level of the western facade that would be screened in from public, from public sight, and it wouldn't be, would not be visible from West Leighton Avenue. The southern building elevation is actually the elevation in the parking lot, so that's what, what would be visible from, from the parking lot, whereas the elevation on the top is what would be visible from West Leighton Avenue. The applicant stated that they, the building would be constructed, the shooting range would be a solid concrete box inside of the larger building concrete box, so that would, and they would also spray sound dampening insulation on the ceiling and sound dampening rubber on the walls to help protect against the sound. The windows looking into the range are two layers of grade-three bulletproof glass, and all the doors leading into the range are solid core and have rubber gaskets that would help insulate the sound as well. They, they anticipate that the noise from the freeway, which is behind the building, south of the, of the proposed building, and, and noise from, from Leighton Avenue would be louder than anything that should be, should be able to be heard from, from the parcel. Plan Commission recommended approval at the June 8th meeting, and I do believe we've, we've had some, some letters sent to the clerk's office.
Okay, that's that. So this is the part, is anyone, everyone that's registered, or that's here to speak, or registered and opinioned one way or the other, there were these sheets up there. Has everyone filled those out? I have a number of them. So the way that we do this, there are people that register to speak, and there are registered, people that registered not to speak but have a position. What we do is we go right down the list, so. And I got one from you. You're Kevin Ali? You're Kevin?
Grab one and fill it out.
So if you can grab one, you should fill out the orange one, just to show you're here. So with regard to the applicant and the folks that are representing the applicant, sometimes there are questions that are raised. It would be a good idea if you had a, a legal pad and a pen to write some of those things down, and if there are comments either for or against that you, you want to weigh in on, that would be helpful. So what I'm going to do first, based on the list here, it's the folks in favor. I have registering, favor, but not speaking, Bonnie Krah, I hope I'm pronouncing this properly, K-R-A-H, is that right? 4714 West Maple Leaf Circle. I have David Patrick, 4361 South 43rd Street. Then, I don't. Yeah, I think we have one there, but, okay. Fill out a, you filled out a blue one the first time. All right. First person registered to speak is Michael Herkic? Could you come up to the microphone? Mike Herkic, lives at 4604 South 84th Street?
Michael Herich, H-E-R-I-T-S-C-H, 4604 South 84th. Just want to say that I'm in favor of this. I believe our city and cities around need more facilities like this, so people learn how to use handguns. I have a wife, three daughters. They all have permits. I do not allow them to carry because they have not had practice enough to be able, in my mind, to be able, be safe enough with them. If they have a facility like this, they can practice, 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 until they feel confident enough to be able to protect themselves.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, next purchase, person registered to speak is Jason Rotz. I'm not pronouncing names very well. R-O-E-T-Z, is that right? 4141 West Square.
My name's Jason Retsz, R-O-E-T-Z, 4141 West Square Avenue. I'm in favor. I think it's a good thing for the city. I think it's an underserved market currently, and I don't really see any downside to it. Looks like the operators are doing this successfully in other, other locations, and I don't, don't see a downside to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person registered to speak in favor is Don Carlson, 5082 West Colonial Court.
See, I welcome new businesses in Greenfield, providing goods and services, expanding the tax base and providing jobs, and I support the business coming in. According to their website, Shoot Point Blank is committed to providing a responsible and enjoyable place for all school, all skill levels to shoot, shop, and learn about firearms. Anybody that is going to purchase a weapon will have a successful background check before they can purchase the weapon. Went online, and they offer a wide variety of classes, both in-person and online, and with all the lanes and the range, it gives people an opportunity to improve and to maintain their proficiency. And I'd also like to point out, especially when outdoor ranges are closed, that it's like, practice time can be at a premium, so it'd be good to have an extra facility. And I want shooters to be responsible, to act safely as far as shooting and storage, and also to be proficient, and I would welcome them to the community.
Thank you. Next person is Jean Schwanek, 5018 South 37th Street. And if I didn't pronounce your name wrong, I apologize.
My name is Jean Schwanek, J-E-A-N, Schwanek, S-C-H-W-O-N-E-K. My address is 5018 South 37th Street. It's my understanding we have somebody that's been passing around a petition, trying to imply that Greenfield's quality of life is going to be harmed by having this business here, and I don't believe that that is true at all. An indoor range will not impact the environment. The shell casings will be scattered on the ground. You just went through the layout of the building. I believe the noise issue has been addressed. We just approved a massage business, and many can say that, nothing against you personally, sir, but we all know that there's play, stories in the news about massage, massage businesses that bring a degradation of quality of life because of clientele and human trafficking and everything else, so.
Be clear, Danny was clear, and he doesn't do any of that stuff.
Right, right. I understand. I'm not casting dispersions, but, you know, if we want to talk about quality of life, there are things that can impact quality of life. Who's most likely to use a shooting range? It's not going to be the criminals. It's going to be responsible people. I took a CCW class last year, and I was really surprised, because I was there for an entire day. It's all about safety. Safety, 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 safety. Never have that weapon loaded. Always have it pointed away from you and anybody else. Always have it locked. Learn how to, you know, control the weapon. And truthfully, there were a lot of women in that class, but by the end of the day, there were some that said, "I'm not so sure I want to be a, a gun holder." So it doesn't necessarily promote you getting a gun. It could be you deciding that's not for you. I'm a deputy court clerk from Milwaukee County. I have been a Milwaukee County employee for close to 30 years. I've been a deputy court clerk now for almost 16 years in the criminal division. I have listened to more cases to do with homicide, guns, fleeing, than, it's like mental abuse, that, and I wonder why I can't sleep at night. The thugs that are shooting on the freeway, that are shooting along State Street, where I walk into a building to work in the morning, and I don't even know if I'm going to get in there, because they're having a shootout in front of the courthouse. These are not the people that are going to come to the shooting range, and we're not going to change that. They're going to do what they're going to do. So I think it's going to be responsible people. They're going to be taught safety. I trust that, I'm sorry, I don't know much about your particular business. I trust that the city has vetted them, that they're not just some fly-by-night organization, but I'm all for it, because as a woman, I want to be able to practice. And going back to the CCW class I took last year, they suggested you, you practice every day. Well, that's impractical for many of us. We're working, we just can't do it. And they said at a minimum, you should be practicing every week. Well, the closest thing, as far as I know, is out in Mesquiko. Frankly, I'm not going to be doing that. I'm not going to be hauling out to Mesquiko all the time to keep practicing something like this. You betcha. I'll be there, you know, I'll get a membership if that's the way they run the business. So I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next person is Dave Shills, 4268 South 79th.
Dave Shills, S-C-H-I-L-Z, 4268 South 79th Street. I'm here in favor of it. Let's, I don't think I'm out of line in saying that this is a politically controversial subject. For every person that we have to speak against, we can find somebody who can speak for, and I think we just take the political BS and put it to the side, and just ask the simple question, is a new business good for the city of Greenfield? We have a piece of land there, that there's nothing there. We're going to put a nice, attractive-looking building. We're going to bring in more people, and we're going to bring in more income. So, simple question, is it good for Greenfield? And I think it is good for the city of Greenfield.
Okay, thank you. Next person is Pete Belcalzo. I probably pronounced that improperly. Apologize. 9237 West Leighton.
It was very close, sir. Pete Belcalzo, 9237 West Leighton.
I got the address right.
You did, and it's, it's a typical pronunciation of the name. Thank you for trying. I've lived at that address since 2014, so I'm not new to the neighborhood, and I've lived in the city of Greenfield on the street, Leighton Avenue, for over a decade. So I, I appreciate all the previous speakers. They've hit on a lot of good points. I'd like to emphasize on a couple of them. In terms of quality of life, I walk nearly daily up and down Leighton Avenue for exercise purposes, and that land is nothing but vacant. It's been, there's been nothing there, just trees and weeds and refuse, you know, blown in the, along the, along the street. So addition of a business that would take care of and have pride of, of ownership there, and it looked like the drawings, the gentleman that'd be running the business, looked like to me would be a professional-looking business additive to the neighborhood. In addition to that, in terms of quality of life, I heard that there was some sort of petition going around. I live in the neighborhood. I'm less than a mile from that, on the same street. I see this as additive. I'm in favor of it. As was mentioned before, if you're going to express your Second Amendment rights, it, you owe it to yourself and to your neighbors to be proficient and to safely operate these devices. Having this establishment in the neighborhood can only afford those law-abiding citizens who are well-wishing and to, to express those rights, to maintain their proficiency in handling their firearms. And I will say that, in line with what the, one of the folks said, there is a place on 84th Street where, where you can shoot, but it's often very busy, a little bit pricey. Having an additional business of this nature, little competition, could help, you know. Having an additional business of this nature, little competition, could help, you know, bring the cost down so that your everyday folks, you know, could, could do, do this and shoot and stay proficient and give you opportunities. You know, if that place is full and booked up and you have to, you know, make a reservation far enough in advance, it kind of discourages you from, from going. So, you know, again, opportunity, frequency of shooting, I'm very much in favor of it. And I, there were a couple of neighbors, also residents, households of the city of Greenfield, were not able to be in attendance here tonight, and they asked me to, you know, voice, you know, positive support for this and let them know if there was anything else that they could do to help support this initiative. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's registered to speak in favor? I also received an email, older person Castner actually received an email, from Donald Valentino, forty-six, twenty, South One Hundred and Eleven Street, regarding the issue tonight. Though I own guns, I'm not a Second Amendment radical. There are things wrong in the system, but preventing a person from opening a business involving guns is not going to fix those. As long as business is run legally and ethically, I see no reason to deny that person the opportunity to open a gun business. Okay, those were all the folks that registered to speak or registered in favor of the special, that requested special use change. Is there anyone else? Okay. So I'm going to do it the same way. For those registering against but not speaking, I've got Sonia Kelnhoffer. Is it K-E-L-N-F-R-H-O-F-E-R, forty-two, forty-five, South Eighty-third Street? Did I spell that properly?
Yes.
Then I have John Westmont, W-E-S-T-M-O-N-T, one-two-three-six-five, West Whittaker Avenue. Did I say that properly? Okay. Then I have Sheri, with an S-H-E-R-Y, Statza, S-T-A-T-Z-A, is that right? Forty-one, eighty, South One Hundred and Twelve Street. Those are the folks that are registering against but not speaking. Okay, then I have three people that are speaking against. The first one is Jill Holton, ninety-five, ninety-five, West Heather Drive.
I've got a little bit to talk about, so I hope...
Can you just do me a favor and pull the mic, pull the mic in? So, I just want to make sure it's working.
Pull the mic in, is that better?
Yeah, that's better, yep.
I have quite a bit to discuss, so I hope you give me all the time necessary. My name is Jill Holton, and I am a gun violence, uh, gun violence survivor. My husband and I have lived in Greenfield for thirty-five years. We are vested in Greenfield. I believe it is important to give back to your community. I have participated in many school events. I've PTA, booster clubs, several years as a poll worker under Jennifer, and graciously served on the library board. Many here know me and have worked aside me. I am a voice of reason and common sense. As you know, the Greenfield Common Council are elected officials. Your duty is to protect and serve our community. That means we count on you to make the best decisions for all of Greenfield, all of us citizens. Past elected, elected officials have set guidelines in the form of ordinances to, to guide you. Back in January, when I was first heard that Shoot Point Blank was interested in Greenfield, I called immediately. I was told there was nothing for me to do until it was posted in the paper via a common council meeting. I watched for five months until it was posted on June thirtieth. And might I add that it was kind of done sneakily, it was right before a holiday, and there's no mention of Shoot Point Blank in any of our Greenfield Common City site. It doesn't promote, it doesn't say anything about that it's coming into our town. I have been walking and talking to my neighbors and engaging the community. I had the unexpected pleasure on my walk to talk to the mayor, and I also had the chance to speak with Mr. Bailey. I am hoping that you, the common council, also had a chance to speak to your constituents and to find out what they've thought of Shoot Point Blank, as I did. The majority that I talked to did not like the idea and were appalled that it was even being considered. This was expressed from gun owners also. They agreed that they didn't want extra guns in our city. Per our city planner, Andrew Stern, the reason this site has been chosen is for its convenience of being off and on the expressway. Today, I had the opportunity to locate and finally listen to the January twelfth Planning Commission meeting regarding Shoot Point Blank. It's taped, so everybody can review it, and I strongly encourage you to do so. The planning committee has a comprehensive plan which states it's intended to guide the growth and development of the city of Greenfield, intend for future land use and infrastructure development, and the key words are to protection of natural resources. There were nine members on the committee, or there are nine members on, at the committee, two owners of Shoot Point Blank were on, present via Zoom or phone, and a realtor, I believe. Our only, our committee, our planning committee's only concern was the exterior brick, the parking constraint, windows had to be on all four sides, and if that, if they had to keep the trees. Eight members present all acknowledged that they were gun holders, owners. One member objected but was never allowed to discuss why. There was no discussion on any protection of natural resources, such as soundproofing or how the company would manage, manage its lead waste, which could be a source of, of water and lead, land contamination. Discussion was spent on how Shoot Point Blank is not shady, how this section of Greenfield is not desirable, and that Shoot Point Blank is perfect for this location. And meeting members kept telling the owners how we would love to have you here. The meeting ends with the mayor saying, unfortunately, he's been looking for a gun for some time, that, and the Shoot Point Blank owners assured him that they had one for him.
I want to just be perfectly clear, it was said in jest. It was, if, if anybody wants to know, I've been looking for a rifle for a very long time.
You can personally, you can personally look at, listen to it.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to be clear that there is, if there's even the remote suggestion that somehow these folks that I haven't talked to in months and months and months are in some way that I'm getting some sort of gun or something out of this deal, it's nonsense. I just want to be very clear about that.
And also, there are state laws on how this building needs to be built, and also there is ventilation issues on how the lead is not going to be leaked out anywhere.
Just let her finish.
Let her finish.
I'm sorry.
As Greenfield citizens, we should also be aware of a Wisconsin statute, eight-nine-five point five-two-seven, which is a shooting range protection law. If any issues would arise as citizens, we would have no legal recourse against Shoot Point Blank. Why would you allow this business to have such power over our community? It is of great importance that you use common sense when looking into allowing Shoot Point Blank into our community. There are a few things that need to be addressed. One is Shoot Point Blank should guarantee soundproofing. They talked about it, but they should guarantee it. Second, they should mitigate lead levels is essential. Employees must sign waivers for lead exposure. Shoot Point Blank should provide the city and residents a plan for ensuring lead that cannot, cannot seep into the ground, wastewater, or aquifer. Shoot Point Blank needs to provide and ensure all lead particles, spent bullets, and casings will be removed from premises and disposed in a way that it does not contaminate our water. Ventilation requirements, and they should regulate indoor air standards. Before the business terminates its operation, it has to remove all lead from premises. Please see the U.S. Department of Energy Office of Health, Safety, and Security. They have a range design criteria list to work from. We also need to contact West Alice for information on statistics regarding any issues from their shooting range and gun stores. I was unable to obtain this information. As it stands now, we have an ordinance zone that prevents Shoot Point Blank from moving into our city. This was designed by our forefathers for a reason. I don't want people outside of my community whom I don't know to bring guns into it. This is where my family, my neighbors, and I live. We all enjoy our life here. I want it to be a safe haven. Mr. Bailey balked when I mentioned I wanted a safe haven, but he knows about having a safe haven when he worked on getting a stop-and-go light on Eighty-fourth and Cold Spring. Or when his dog was being carried off by coyotes. We all want our community to be safe. I am not denying anyone a use of, I'm not denying anyone use of a shooting range or gun store. We have twenty-five gun stores, shooting ranges in a drivable distance from Greenfield, two or three that are just four miles from our, from here. I want to dampen the gun rhetoric in Greenfield, to make it a safe environment for every last citizen in our great city. I plead with you to use common sense tonight and vote against Shoot Point Blank, not to amend the ordinance or zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is William Holton of the same, ninety-five, ninety-three, is it, or ninety-five, ninety-five?
Ninety-five, ninety-five.
West Heather Drive.
William Holton, ninety-five, ninety-five, West Heather Drive. I guess not to repeat, that's kind of hard, but I'll try. My, my point is a subtle one, but I can hear it in this room, and we can hear it when we talk to people. I hear it at work. I see it on TV. I see it in the movies. I see this gun culture just growing and growing and growing, and no one can stop it. Despite there being room in the laws, the Supreme Court case and the case in Chicago that passed, even the Supreme Court gave room to, to have reasonable gun laws, but I'm not here for that. That, there's no way an older person is going to fight against any gun lobby. It's, it's a losing cause. I'm just asking, this gun culture is asking something from our community, and we don't have to give it to them. They're asking for the change. We're, we can just stick with our ordinance. I know that there's fear that legally we can't stop companies once they come in here. We, it's just a tough thing to do, but we can. We've stopped other things from coming in here. And we do have gun range, and, this is personal, too, right? When I get up on Sunday morning and I want to relax, I hear the guns shooting from my house. From that address, I can hear the gun ranges. And we have lots of expressory right by us, and I, I don't think, this, this company sounds very professional, and they'll probably be a good job with the sound, I don't know, but they can turn and sell this company, this, this land immediately, next month, to somebody else, and you're, we're stuck with whatever we have. So these, this is very important change not to do. And, and you cannot control who comes into this community, can't control who goes on a gun range. I've been to gun ranges. I've shot at gun ranges. There's idiots there doing all sorts of things that are unsavory. There's people buying and selling guns on the side. You can't stop this. It's west, you know, we can't just pretend, oh, that happens in West Alice, that won't Yeah, so my point is subtle. It's, it's just, this culture just keeps growing and growing and growing. Sometime we just have to, you know, step back a little bit and don't contribute. This, you're my, you're my alderman persons, and I ask you not to contribute to this, this growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last person is Carly, I don't have a last name.
Howser.
Howser. Could you spell your last name and then?
My name is...
Ninety-five, forty-one, West Brookside?
Yep. My name is Carly Howser, ninety-five, forty-one, West Brookside Drive. And Harrison Howser is also here to speak out against it as well, if you can hear him in the background. I have a few, few questions. So once it is, if, if it passes, or if it did pass, that it's rezoned, what other businesses qualify in the rezoning that if this business does not stay, could enter into the community?
This isn't, we can't really answer.
I can, we can answer it after your thing.
Okay, great.
And I, I mean, just because there's fifteen, so this is a special use, right? So if someone wanted to come in and say, put it in some other zoned area similar to this zoning, they would have to still go through the public hearing process and all those other things would have to be addressed. The change in zoning doesn't necessarily approve their use. It allows their use, it permits their use after a public hearing, and it ultimately, the site and landscaping plan and every, and the business plan and the conditions of the special use, which are by resolution of the common council, are imposed upon the user. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can just come to City Hall and say, I want to put a shooting range here, because now you can do it. You still have to go through all of the process. The, the user still has to be vetted. All of those things still have to come into play. Special uses flow with the property, though, but are governed by a special use resolution.
Great. Then I have another number of other questions that can be answered after, but they can be documented here. So sound, I believe that Shoot Point Blank is a national franchise. I know they talked about sound, but since it's national, have they, have they done tests in order to...
We can let them answer those questions, I think, after...
Okay, great. The wetlands are close by. Are we working to preserve those, and how close are we going to infringe on them? I know that the Walmart Development also looked at that, and it's one of the reasons why they didn't expand, and I'm wondering if this development has an opportunity in the future to expand? And if so, would it be outdoors, and what are the environmental factors of that? This is all about future developments.
So just as it relates to the city, because the applicant may not be able to answer this, outdoor shooting ranges aren't, are prohibited in the city of Greenfield, period. Most of the regulations cited by Mrs. Holton related to groundwater, those were the result of outdoor shooting ranges.
Right.
The biggest one along Lake Michigan, if you all remember, up by UWM, there used to be a shooting range. The ground was incredibly contaminated by lead because the, the outdoor range was used for so long. Because I understand this shooting range, and it's the, all of the activity, all of the debris, the, the bullets remain within the building and don't escape into the environment.
And remain in the building for how long, and then how are they disposed of, and have they been in contact with MMSD? I did reach out to MMSD to see if they ad, advocate one way or another.
There are material safety data sheets with regard to lead, lead dust, I'm sure everything that's within that building. Greenfield, the city of Greenfield has a shooting range located in the, the base of its police station. It involves like rubber pallets against the back wall. You can't hear anything when anybody's shooting down there. The bullets fall to the back, and I'm not sure if they're swept up. I don't know what the, maybe, maybe you can address that for them.
Great. Great. And then has, has the council communicated with other gun stores and neighboring communities to, or the police departments and neighboring communities to see if there have been crimes associated with guns that have been purchased at gun ranges in the area or shooting, or shooting ranges?
Our police department did reach out to other municipalities, like Naperville, Illinois was one of them. There were a couple other ones that were in Illinois. Our police department reached out to them, had nothing but glowing reviews from the law enforcement in those communities, truthfully. And Mr. Patrick, if he didn't leave, did he leave?
He just, he stepped out.
He was our assistant police chief at the time, who I think made some of those calls.
I also talked to our current assistant police chief today, and he did tell me he did reach out to other communities that have these ones from Shoot Point Blank.
So their, their reputation, and I'm not, it's up to them to make this decision, okay? But the reputation that was provided to us, and we talk, I talk, I'm, I'm actually living in the house that's closest to the shooting range. I don't know if you know that?
Yes.
Like, right across from the shooting range, in my fiancee's house. So I'm worried about the noise, I'm worried about all of those things, too. I'm worried about guns, I'm, right? I'm worried about the kind of operator. There are some gun store operators in Milwaukee that tend to get in the news, that many of the weapons that are traced back to criminals... the weapons that are traced back to criminals are often, were traced, I think, back to one, specifically one gun store. I certainly didn't want anything like that. Certainly didn't want any part of that within our community. I wanted someone, if you want to answer.
Can you finish?
Yeah, why don't you finish and now?
Sure. And are you willing to take that risk that by adding this business, that that could become an issue in our community?
There shouldn't be back and forth, right?
Yeah, I guess I can. I can answer that when you're done, sorry.
And then my final few thoughts and questions are more on a larger scale. Wondering, and I, I had a, about a 20-minute conversation with Alderman Katsner, I'm sorry, Katsner yesterday. And I'm just wondering what Greenfield is doing to attract business and economic development and if the path that we're going down is the vision that everybody in, is, is the vision that everybody that sits in elected seats would like to see Greenfield continue down? When you drive down Highway 100, do you want to see vape shops, Walmarts, tattoo shops, massage parlors, gun ranges, or do you envision it as a different type of community?
Thanks.
I mean, we, I moved to Greenfield one year ago, almost exactly. I lived here from when I was born until I was 18, then I lived downtown Milwaukee from 18 until 30. I chose to live here because my family lives here, but when I describe where I live in Greenfield, I say I'm on the border of Hales Corners and Greendale because they have different reputations than Greenfield. And I'm very involved in the neighborhood that I used to live in, which is Walker's Point. I'm on the board for the association. I know our alderman Perez well. I know our district police officers. I would like to also be involved in Greenfield and I would like to know on a larger scale what we're doing to attract more diverse constituents that are active. I mean, if you look around, nobody here is, is younger, there aren't many females, there's nobody that I could see.
They're numbers.
That's very diverse and I'm just, I would just like everybody that is in elected official positions to think about the direction that, that Greenfield is going. And if, if businesses like this can come into our community, there's, there's a reason why they went to Greenfield instead of Greendale, right? If we're not actively attracting businesses, local businesses or other businesses that also serve the community, they, they pry on communities that aren't actively searching for different types of businesses that serve the community in a larger scale.
Okay. So I can, I can, are you done?
Yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against or register against? There is some more global questions that I think you asked, asked. So I was born, just to say, you don't know anything about me, I'm not sure Ms. Holton does. I didn't recognize your name until afterwards when I actually appointed her to the library board because you were highly recommended to sit on the library board. I apologize for not meeting you earlier. So I was born and raised in Greenfield. I went to Elmdale, went to middle school, went to the high school. Graduated not from Whitteno, from Greenfield High School, the other side of town, right? When you live on the Whitteno side, Greenfield side is a little bit different. I went to Wisconsin, Madison, got a degree there, went to law school, lived in Minneapolis for four years, came, practiced law in northern Wisconsin, came back to be closer to my parents. Pretty much know what the reputation is. I lived one block away from Greendale on 45th and Grange, 46, which was, they didn't have numbered streets, they had named streets, right? John McLaughlin lived one block over in Greendale. Our roads were historically really crappy and when you drove into Greendale, they were always perfect, right? Southridge existed, right? And we had Spring Mall, right? With a fish store and, right? Historically, and this is in all deference to the city, there's a community that's close to the lake on the south side that has kind of an interesting reputation. In many respects, I thought Greenfield was sort of that of the southwest side, right? There wasn't much planning. If you look at 76 and Layton, you look around, drive up and down 27th Street, Forest Home, Layton Avenue, Highway 100, you see a menagerie of things just kind of flopped everywhere, right? Ever tried to get in Best Buy at Christmas? You can just, you know, you can kind of see it, right? I've been doing this, I guess now for 16 years. My number one priority was to bring up the city, and this isn't about me, but it gets to the question of, well, is anybody doing anything? Because Greendale, which by the way, has a bankrupt shopping mall in its locality and the newest business that it has is a vape shop that violates every one of our assigned codes across the street where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be, or the Learning Center, or Hales Corners, which has a plethora of massage parlors, which are kind of different than the ones that we vet through our police department. They also have their share of vape spots, vape shops and all those things. While the city of Greenfield enjoyed turning 84 South from $7 million worth of value into $175 million worth of value through a diverse development, and we're currently working on another development on Loomis and Layton, which plant, which we anticipate will turn about $6 million worth of stuff into about $100 million worth of stuff. We think about it all the time, just like all the time. That's all I do, just so you know. When it comes to this property, Mrs. Holton said something about this side of town is not desirable. I think that was a quote. This side of town, you said. That's not what I said at the planning commission. What I said is this parcel is not been desirable. The one that's next to a car wash and is owned currently by the First Weber folks who've been trying to sell it for 15 years, just so you know. So when it comes to a gun shop, which I get, I have guns, right? And I don't have a place to practice and I should probably be practicing, right? Because I go deer hunting periodically and the gun should be cited and all those stuff and I'm not sure I'll get a membership. And I certainly don't want to buy a gun that I could have had three, three years ago for 300, that's now 1,200, right? That even if they can find it, okay? Just to be clear about that. So this was a very difficult parcel to redevelop, very, very difficult. And of course, the self-storage on the corner, which was a mistake from 25 or 30 years ago, which is a complete eyesore, right? Totally get that too, right? Because you can't get rid of them once those are in, period. Those are worse probably than this. No offense to the self-storage people of the world. So when these folks approached and talked about all of this, you know, we want to do this, I think everybody that sits up here thinks about guns and shooting ranges and all this stuff and oh my God, there's like, in national politics today, it's like, oh good God, really guns? Or if it was a Planned Parenthood, or if it was a whatever, right? It brings out elements, right? It brings out strong emotions from everybody. So what we tried to do from the staff perspective, and that's Andrew and Christie, and by the way, we have a pretty diverse common council, by the way. Three of, a majority of our common councils are women. Christie's boss, or Andrew's boss is a woman, Jennifer is a woman. We have a pretty, as diverse as we can possibly get, although we find that those that have diverse characteristics and traits are often, there's like a magnet out there. It's like, no, we want you, right? And they typically migrate to the city of Milwaukee. But our fire department has, is very diverse. Our police department continues to try to be diverse. We try to be diversified. That was a footnote and I apologize for that. So it wasn't this side of town was not desirable, it was that parcel that was not desirable. These folks came to town, they said all the right things. I don't trust anybody. I'm sort of a lawyer by trade. I mean, and I don't trust anybody and I question everything and I'm a smart alec and I'm a this and I'm caustic and I'm cynical. You can ask everyone that sits up here, right? That I will push and pull, you know, to try to get the real answer. And the real answer in this case is, are these guys a bunch of guys that are going to dress up and, you know, camouflage and, you know, drive around the parking lot in Jeeps and tanks and, or are they a safe, well-run organization that's going to add some sort of value, at least to half the population here or more? It seems that gun ownership is very high in the city of Greenfield and I based that on a conversation I had with the police department a long time ago. These guys are good at what they do. And they're in communities in Illinois, like Naperville isn't a, isn't a dumpy city. If you lived in Illinois, you'd probably say, you know, I'm close to Naperville, just saying.
Yeah, I do know things about the suburbs in Illinois.
Right, it's a nice place, right? So they go into nice, they go into nice places. They probably do that because the demographics in nice places are really strong. They sell memberships every month for, you know, while there's probably one that Gene over there can afford, right? But there's also some that are pretty darn pricey, right? It's more than a health club, I think, depending on the health club. So Wisconsin Athletic Club may as well comparable, right? But they're looking for people that have money and want to play with their guns at the end of the day, right?
And that's something that you envision you'd like in the community.
Right. So the, so the next question gets to is, do you think this is good and do you feel safe? Well, if a bullet comes out of that building, it's probably going to end up in my bedroom across the freeway. All the noise issues that are there, I literally am the closest spot. I can go to the fence in our backyard and peek right at it. What's probably more noisy and what drives me nuts every night on Fridays between 9:30 and 11:00, every Friday night until recently, thank the police department for increasing their enforcement, was the drag racing and the diesel park trucks in the, in the park and ride, to be honest. That got a little out of hand, right?
What you did say, that diesel trucks do patronize shooting ranges.
Well, not with, you know, 50 caliber machine guns on the back, I guess is. I have, my son has a diesel truck and God bless him because it's just, he lays coal or something and I yell at him and then I threaten him. So not with a gun. Another thing I just kind of wanted to point out, so there's this idea that while at the planning commission, all the guys that had guns were in favor of it and the one woman, Chris Helene, who I appointed to the planning commission 16 years ago, upon getting elected because she was the biggest thorn in my side, right? It's like, Chris, you don't think I'm doing a good job? I'm going to appoint you to the planning commission. I want you to sit down there. I want you to hear everything that I hear and I want you to participate in every single discussion. An alderperson Katsner has been on the planning commission since then and I think he would concur with that.
That is a true statement.
I have never in my life told anybody sitting at this table in a private meeting, a public meeting, just shut up. I don't want to hear you. I don't have time for you. I don't care what your reasons are. I, you know, we all own guns and you're a woman and, I mean, if that was the implication.
Well, I have told you.
Mayor, you might have done.
She has, she has told me to be quiet.
There is a time limit. You may have said it to me when we were kids. I grew up with a mayor.
So I've known her since I was a kid, so.
Yeah, he probably said it to me.
We're about to say it to you.
Yeah.
Just to be clear too, that there, there was this talk about gun lobby, this is from the city standpoint, some gun lobby thing, like the NRA is giving me campaign donations or they're giving me, I've not talked to anybody else, talked to these guys four times and NRA is not here, no.
No, I can vouch for that. I don't think any of us have been contacted by the gun lobby.
No. So that's all I got. In answer to your question, do you have other questions? Greenfield is actually better than Greendale now? And that you can put on a, it'll be, I think.
Well, yeah, I would like to know the next steps of how the questions will be answered and then when the, the voting actually happens.
Yeah, it's going to happen quickly, well not. So did, so is anyone else that would like to speak for or against?
Well, I have a letter.
Oh, and Shirley, can I just read it? You want to?
I'm going to.
So she, there's one more letter against and Shirley wants to read it.
Okay. Well, my alderperson.
You were asked, you were asked.
Yeah. I am writing to object to the special exception permit requested for a new gun range and store in Greenfield. I do not, I'm leaving a few of the details out.
Leave it out? You have to read the whole thing. If you're going to read it, you got to read it.
Oh, I understand the hearing concerning this subject is being held on July 20th. I believe you are my alderman. My address is 4544 West Maplewood Drive in Greenfield. I do not support this permit. I support a safe and family-friendly, friendly environment in the city of Greenfield and specifically for the area around Highway 100 in Greenfield. I don't believe a gun range and gun store supports this. Even the name of this proposed gun range store says it all. Shoot Point Blank is not a name that promotes target practice and hunting gun use. You don't shoot point blank at targets or wildlife while hunting. It's a term used when shooting people. My immediate family, both my family and in-laws are historically hunters, but I also don't want the type of clientele in my city that this business would attract. I hope you will take my concerns seriously as a constituent in your district and a concerned citizen of the city of Greenfield. Please do not support this permit. I don't believe it would be a good direction for the city of Greenfield to go and it would also not benefit the surrounding businesses on Highway 100. Thank you. Lynn Claflin, 4544 West Maplewood Drive.
Great, thank you. Just one quick question before, do you want to sit on the planning commission as an alternate? I have an opening.
I'll consider.
It's, it's one Tuesday a month.
I'll consider, but I also have a commitment on the last Tuesday of every month.
It's only the first two, second Tuesday of every month, that's it.
But I also have one more question, so.
Get to the microphone.
I have to go to the microphone.
If the, the company and the owners are to answer my questions, would that be happening before or after the vote?
They're going to do it right now. They're going to come up to the.
Thank you.
They've been taking copious notes, I hope. Have you? Come on up, tell me who you are.
My name is Kevin Ali. I live at 1053 Observatory Point, Mainville, Ohio, 45039. And I'm in charge of real estate for Shoot Point Blank. And I'll start with addressing that letter. I wildly agree with a portion of that letter. I've despised the name of this company since early on. And we just recently secured the web address, copyright materials, trademarks, et cetera, for Range USA. So this company, we will spend about $1.5 million and change the name of every single store that we own to Range USA. Someone mentioned franchises earlier. There's not one single franchise. We own them all. So it is a chain of 28 stores. We have six under construction. We are the largest chain in the country by far, probably a little bit more than triple, which means we have more to lose than anybody. So we have brought some policy and procedure to a wildly antiquated and archaic industry and it's working well for us. So Shoot Point Blank, we typically build about a 15,000 square foot facility and with 20 lanes. This site is small. So someone had mentioned earlier about expansion. There will be not one inch, one ounce of expansion here whatsoever. All of our locations, there's not one single outdoor range in our chain at all, not one, nor will there be. It's just not our business model. Our business model is, is this lady right here, who maybe not the most familiar with guns, maybe had an incident in her life and said, you know what? I need to be able to protect myself. We educated 80,000 people last year in gun safety courses, 80,000. We are far and away the best gun safety educator around, probably second, maybe second to the NRA. But we educate numerous, numerous thousands of people, over 80,000 people last year, just last year, in basic handgun courses, in concealed carry courses, in advanced handgun safety courses. We're not your typical gun store. We follow federal law and then some. So the Brady Bill says that if you come in to buy a gun, if we have not gotten a clear FBI background check in three business days, we can let you leave with that gun. You pay for it and you can leave. And then if the FBI calls us and says five days later, hey, that, that gun shouldn't have been sold, we go get, back and get it. We don't do that. If we do not have a clear-cut FBI-approved, you can sell that gun to that person, the gun does not leave our store. We don't do that. There's several things that we go above and beyond federal law because it's just the way we do our business. We concentrate on the first timers, on the neophytes. That's our business model. If you can break down an AR-15 blindfolded, you have somewhere better to buy a gun most likely, most chances. We, we really concentrate on female. I was in Chicago a few Sundays ago and we had two classrooms, 20 people in each one and they were all females. So we have ladies sure shot nights. We do all kinds of things for helping females feel comfortable. So many of us, and I, I am not the most sophisticated gun guy in the world, I'm a real estate guy. So many people have wanted to go into a gun range, but yet they don't speak fluent gun speak. So they're intimidated on going in. That's not our store. We, we don't have people running around in fatigues. We don't have people wearing bandoliers. We don't have people with machetes strapped to their back. We get our managers from Costco, Marshalls, Target, places such as that. It is a very family-friendly environment. We'll have two or three employees open carry, just to make sure that people know that the store is, is safe and protected. The rest of our employees, if they would, if they The rest of our employees, if they would, if they wish, they can conceal carry. There is just a basket full of things that we do differently. We have a range safety officer on the range at all times. If one person's shooting, we have a range safety officer. We have cameras on every lane. They're monitored. If we have 10 people shooting, we might very well have two range safety officers in there. So again, nothing that's federal law, it's something that we do. There's no range in this town that's like us, none that look like us, none that behave like us, none that have the same policies and procedures as us, none at all. So we're very excited. We sought out Greenfield because we thought it was a wonderful community. This is where we want to be. If a community tries to push us towards the red light district, towards the gravel pit, we don't go. We don't lawyer up, we don't sue, we don't fight. If the community wants us, we'd love to be there. If they don't want us, we will move on. Naperville, one of the nicest zip codes in the country. Carmel, Indiana, one of the nicest zip codes in the country, one of the most affluent zip codes in the country. Those are the neighborhoods that we go after. We're not in the city of Chicago. We're not, we're not the city's gun store at all. We're in the suburbs. The ATF does surprise inspections on gun stores. You have to have your paperwork in order. Everything has to be accounted for. And the ATF comes in and says, we are in the top 1% of the top 1%. If everyone handled their business like we handled our business, they say their jobs would be a thousand times easier. All of our stores across the country, we do our best to get the FBI, Homeland Security, Secret Service, the local police departments to shoot in our ranges. We want their cars in our parking lot, we want their uniforms in our store. If there's a military base nearby, we do our best to get those people in our stores. It sets the tone for our store, who we are and what we are. We're not the guy that the nefarious folks go to for buying guns, because they'll do, they'll bend the rules and let some doors, guns slide out the side door. It's not us. We have cameras, we have motion sensors, we record driver's license. If you shoot on our range, we record your driver's license. So if anyone needed to see it five months down the road, it's there. Your signature on your waiver, it's there. Bad guys don't like us. They don't want to come near our store. Their face is on camera, license plates in the parking lot are picked up, we record driver's license. We don't believe in person-to-person transfers at all, flabbergasted that they can happen today. We don't go to gun shows. That's where person-to-person transfers can take place. I could sell a gun to a person, I don't know their name, address, phone number, I don't know if they're a US citizen, I don't know if they were arrested for spouse abuse last week. You don't know, and that sale is legal, according to the federal government. We don't go to gun shows, we don't advertise at gun shows, we don't set up a booth or a table at gun shows. It's not what we do, it's not who we're going to be. We've never sold bump stocks. We've never sold high-capacity magazines, so 80-round, 90-round, 100-round, 200-round barrel clips, never sold them. We don't see the need, we don't see the purpose. Not that saying anybody else does, that they're heinous, it's not our business model, it's not what we do, it's not how we handle our business. People talked about lead and lead exposure. The bullet trap system that we use is what the federal government uses on their military bases and installations. They've been put in from Kuwait till the Carolinas, and all points in between. It is a rubber trap bullet trap system, and, so people shoot into the stack of rubber, we can run an algorithm, and we can say, okay, we think we have about 35,000 pounds of lead in our bullet trap system. We hire an outside, professional, licensed company, they come in and they vacuum out all the rubber, large suction tubes, suction out all the rubber. Everything left on the ground is the lead. So that lead is shoveled up, it is put in 55-gallon drums, it's sealed up, and it's sent off to be recycled. We might get a $35,000 check for our 40, 45,000 pounds worth of lead. That lead never sees the garbage can, never sees the dump, never sees the outside. It gets shoveled into a 55-gallon drum, sealed, put on a truck, it's documented, I have to be able to show OSHA what we've done with that lead. Our filtration system is what typically is in hospitals for operating room to keep the air clean, sanitized, and dust-free. So the air will go through a series of filters, many, many filters, 30, 40, 50 filters goes through, ends up with HEPA filters. We can monitor every filter from our home office in Cincinnati, Ohio. Every store, we can look and we can say, wow, air pressure's getting a little high in this store right here, our Greenwood, Indiana store. That means the filters need to be changed. When the filters need to be changed, they're put in plastic-lined boxes, they're sealed, they're stamped, and they are collected by a biohazard recycling company. We have to keep the paperwork, it's documented, we have to be able to show it to OSHA, send it into OSHA. We need to be able to show those filters did not go to the dumpster and go to the local landfill. So that's how we handle lead in our stores. Our employees, we test them for lead. If they're a range safety officer, every so often, they are, their blood level, their lead level in their blood is tested. We test their hearing on a regular basis. We want to know if someone's not wearing their headgear. We use a HEPA vac in our range at the end of every night to suck up any remaining lead dust that's on the floor. That HEPA vac filter, properly disposed of, plastic-lined box, stamped, sealed, and sent off to a recycling company, and there's documentation. We, we're not your typical gun store. We do things very, very different, and on the site that we're looking at, there are no wetlands, no wetlands on our side of the road. And we think this community is, is, I mean, you've set the standard. I mean, good grief, we haven't built this nice of a building since Carmel, Indiana. And I think 300 of those 500 trees are on our site. So the standards for this community are set high, and we're willing to abide by them to get in, that's how much we would like to be here. And we didn't seek out this neighborhood because it's shoddy or shabby or, or no one's paying attention. Quite the contrary, we sought it out because it was the right kind of folks for us. Sir? We've built this building now 28 times. Six more times are in process right now. So from the very first building to this one, we've gotten a lot better, a whole lot better. We build a solid concrete box inside of a solid concrete box. We use CMU, so Concrete Masonry Units, it's backfilled with concrete, so they're solid walls. Every door is solid, every door frame is solid, every window frame is concrete-filled, solid, bulletproof glass, two layers. We use this insulating foam, so it's a sound dampening, insulating foam called...
Can you hear outside?
There will be something audible outside. It will be, we will not violate your noise ordinance on our retail floor. So outside our building, it will be negligible. We've had sellers, so people that were trying to buy their property, be nervous, and we have them go look at a location. You know, Chicago, I think we have five open in Chicagoland. And so if we have someone that has some concerns, we say, well, here, this is exactly what we're going to build, go look at it, go stand outside. Stand on the side, stand on the back, stand in the front during, during one of our hours that we're, someone's shooting, and we'll, you can see how it's going to sound, negligible. I think you'll be pleased. We have, we've supplied a stack of letters from the communities that we're in, the police chief, the mayor, the vice mayor, the chief of staff, that say, you know what? Good guys, good operators, everything he said he would do, they've done. They did it well, we're glad we've got them, they're good corporate citizens. I feel strongly that's exactly what will happen here. Any questions? I haven't hit, any, any questions someone wants answered that I haven't addressed?
Does anybody have any questions?
I...
There's a gentleman back. And so you have to, companies have to say who you are, and I don't want to get involved in this really long discussion.
Let me say one more thing real fast before you go. We're not a plasma donation center. We don't attract a seedy element at all, quite the contrary. Our, our basic handgun classes, our concealed carry classes, our, will look like one of your Sunday School classes. Will look like a church meeting. We are not, we are not the nefarious crowd hangout at all.
Can I just ask you one real quick question before he...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let him.
It's still the public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No.
No, go ahead.
It's a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Pete Bacalzo, 9237, Wes Layton again. I want to thank the gentleman for all of the answers. I live right down the block, you're probably closer, but safety is a concern of mine. And I've always wondered how the ceiling is addressed. We talked about a concrete bunker along the sides, and if you've ever shot at one of these ranges, there is a ceiling, and I'd like them to address the ceiling safety. Someone, for some reason, shoots upward.
Okay.
And then the other thought is, in the parking lot, you have a lot of newbies, haven't done this, that's their audience, that's their clientele. One of the thoughts is, when people are coming and going from a building, if they haven't safely cased their weapon, or they're driving, you know, away from there, I live right down the street, I certainly wouldn't want somebody driving away from this facility with un-cased guns and their unpracticed, and, you know, to, to address the point of someone else was, you know, could that cause an element of, an undesirable element in a neighborhood? In my opinion, if it was done unsafely, and I live right down the street, and now guns are going off as people are driving home right past my house, you know, that would be a concern. And also, I want to say, since I live right down the street from the fire station there, there's a lot of fires, there are a lot of calls, and I hear those trucks all the time, and they're very loud. I'd be very surprised if I could hear that gun range over those, over those sirens.
Okay. To address the ceiling, there are steel baffles as you go downrange, so all the angles are taken care of. So if someone would misfire high, if someone anticipated a kick and they would fire high, it's going to catch one of a series of steel baffles covered in, in a ballistic-absorbing rubber, and that's what's on the walls as well. So that bullet will hit the, the ballistic rubber and be absorbed into that, that steel shield. So that's the ceiling. We'll have on our front door, all firearms must be cased and unloaded before they were brought in or out of the store. No one's walking in and out with a gun strapped over their shoulder. When someone buys a gun, we have to ask the question, and, and some people will tell us it's none of our business, but we ask, how and where? How and where? Big, big piece for us, that we pound through our employees' heads, how and where? How are you going to store it? Where are you going to store it? And if you want to tell me it's none of my business, it's none of my business. But we're wanting to plant the seed of, you need to think about this. What's this weapon for? Is it for your house? Is it for your truck? Is it for sports and fun and recreation? Whatever it might be for, you, we, we just want you to think, how are you going to store it? Where are you going to store it? And we will help you with any of those needs if you have those needs. We, in our years of, of existence, since 2012, we have, I have not seen one documented parking lot discharge in all of our years. We will make sure everybody's coming in and out of our store with the guns unloaded and cased.
Okay, thank you. So, does anybody else have questions that they want to address? We'll do it during the public hearing, but, okay. Alderperson Collins first, and Alderperson Bailey.
Okay, just real quick, with regards to your range safety officer, is there a special training that they have to go through?
Yes, ma'am. All of our employees go through about 30 hours of training, and they go through an NRA course to be certified as a range safety officer. So yes, there is training, training for everyone before they get on the floor, a little more special training for the range safety officers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll leave first.
Just one quick question. I know the people that I spoke against were concerned about the contamination. I think you answered that, that there has been no contamination at your other stores or any other problems?
No, sir, none.
With lead contamination with other employees that have worked in your stores or...
We had a gentleman that was cleaning one of our ranges and refused to wear his respirator properly when he was running the, the HEPA vac. He was a retired military guy and said he was older and it didn't matter, and we test everyone's blood levels, and his blood levels were high. And so we had to tell him, he had to wear his respirator, he had to wear it properly, or we're going to have to let him go, because we weren't going to be responsible for the liability of him having some sort of illness due to high lead exposure. And he was making a choice of not wearing that, and so we had to let him go.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, your five facilities in Chicago, are they, are they in the city of Chicago?
No, ma'am, not a one.
Suburbs.
Not a one, suburbs. We don't want anything to do with the city of. No, ma'am. It's not our market.
And the name of this building, if you should build it in Greenfield, it will be...
It will open as Range USA. It will not open...
You're going to have to spend money to change it.
I'm sorry?
Oh, it will open as, oh, right.
It will open as Range USA. Now, we have stores right now being built that are going to open up as Shoot Point Blank, and that's about a $25,000 sign package, that will be discarded, wasted, because we won't be ready to make this changeover until probably February. This store won't open until probably September with the winters up here.
Sure.
By the time we get drawn, fully permitted, et cetera, et cetera, we probably won't be open until next September. This store will open as Range USA.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you get any other phone calls or letters? I know someone can, oh, no, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so every single email, phone call, message that any of us get, we share with Jennifer, our city clerk, to make sure that everyone's voice, because we understand that everyone can't make it to a public hearing sometimes, so... We try to get all of those things in, and we try not to omit anything when we say them, so... Is there anyone else that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? I have to ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Alderperson Castner.
Motion to close the public hearing.
By Castner to close the public hearing.
I will second.
By Alderperson Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Does the council wish to take any action with regard to approving the ordinance to amend Section 21040603 of the Mississippi Code pertaining to all other musmic and recreational industries firearm ranges being permitted as a special use in a C4 Regional Business District and C5 Freeway Business District, approve the special, or approve the resolution for special use permit, and approve the site landscaping and architectural plans with the understanding that signs may change?
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
To approve, motion to approve those items by Alderperson Castner, second by Alderperson Collins. Would you please, Alderperson Bailey?
Discussion.
I have a few things I'd just like to say. I heard, you know, both sides, and I commend some of the people coming here and, you know, giving us their opinion on both sides. As a council, or as a council member, I have to make my decision on what's good for the city. And I think that this would be a good business for the city. And I take offense to some of the things that were said here tonight.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it.
Not, not you.
Because I always offend him.
But this council, and I know, I can speak for the council here, our councilman, our mayor, and our people that work for the city, we've improved the city, we work hard to improve the image of the city. I'm proud of what this council's done. We've, we've, we've brought good businesses into the city. You can look at 84 South, you can look at, Mr. Steinhofer wanted his big store in Greenfield. He didn't want it in Greendale, he didn't want it anyplace else, he wanted it in Greenfield. And that's what, that was the genesis of that whole 84 South, because Mr. Steinhofer wanted his big superstore in Greenfield. We've done a lot to the city. We've brought in businesses. Our parks, we've done a lot for our parks. Like I say, I'm on the tree commission, we're planting trees, we're trying to make the city a better place, a more beautiful place. There are so many things positive, and I'm, I was insulted by some of the things that were said here tonight. and I was insulted by some of the things that were said here tonight. And I know that this council and the mayor and all the, we have a park secretary sitting in the back, he's done a heck of a job with Concho Park and all the things we've brought into the city, all the good things that are done at Concho Park and all the money we put into the AMP and the different things we've done. So I say, I was a little insulted by some of the things that were said tonight, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
In fairness, Greenfield is a much different place than it was thirty years ago. I mean, it's complete, no, it's a lot different.
Yes.
You don't want us to come and speak, that's the message I'm giving right now.
I don't want what?
You don't want us to come and speak.
No, I want you to speak. No, I mean, it's, no, I mean, well, I can't, I can't get any, I will talk to you after, I will talk to you after the meeting all you want. Honest to God, I'll talk to you after the meeting all you want, but I can't get engaged in debate while we're in a board meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
Motion was made, seconded, would you please call?
Elder person Collins?
Aye.
Elder person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder person Castner?
Aye.
Elder person Akers?
Aye.
Elder person Sarian?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Okay, under L, old business, there are council appointments, are there any to the Board of Public Works? Are there any to the Board? I have no appointment to the Board of Health right now. Mayor appointment, one member to the Planning Commission.
Do we have an opening or a volunteer there?
So one member to the Planning Commission for Chris Helene's spot, I would appoint Mr. Krentz, who is an alternate right now, to be that member, with the understanding there is one alternate available. And I will appoint, if she accepts it, Mrs. Hauser to the Planning Commission as an alternate member every other, every Tuesday, every month, if you want to sit on it.
You can get back to us if you want.
If you want. If you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it, but I would do it. Okay? New business, letter of resignation received from Lou Silver, the tree commission, please send the letter. I don't have a new member to the tree commission. There's an amendment, under item M3, amended summons and amended complaint received by attorney Erdman of Erdman Law on behalf of Lawrence Sicar, that's referred to council. Our council. Okay, so there are items four, five, six, seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. I think all of those are not contentious. I'd make a mo-
I'll make a motion.
You skipped nine, or eight, nine, and ten, right?
Eight, nine, and ten remain to be discussed by the council.
I'll make a motion to approve those items as you read out.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by elder person Sarian, just, those are the items that, those are the outdoor events.
Right.
Those are the planning commission items that passed, and those are the finance committee and Board of Public Works items.
And just-
And applications and licenses. Just I feel I won't be doing my job if I don't remind all of you, but if any of you wish to, you can move to split the question to take any of those out. So before the meeting, I asked if there was any, and items eight, nine, and ten are going to be removed. I have not changed my motion was made to approve those items.
I have not changed mine.
Would you please call?
Elder person Collins?
Aye.
Elder person Bailey?
Clarify the question.
Everything but nine, everything but eight, nine, and ten.
Everything but eight, nine.
Eight and ten.
Nine and ten.
Aye.
Elder person Castner?
Aye.
Elder person Akers?
Aye.
Elder person Sarian?
Aye.
Just for people that may be watching this, how could someone vote on twenty-six things unanimously? Most of the things, by the time they get here, often have those things worked out at committee and are fully vetted. Okay, going back to, I made a proven outdoor special event application for the House of Harley hometown rally, sixty-two, twenty-one, Wes Leighton, from August thirty-first to September sixth. It includes the combination, this combination of licenses, the outdoor special event license, temporary Class B retailers, license for beer, food, and commercial building, electrical, and plumbing.
I'm okay with taking eight, nine, and ten altogether. I think elder person Bailey-
Do you want to take them all together? One is for the one-week thing?
They don't- Well, if you want that one separate, that's fine.
Doing eight first.
Okay, okay, do eight and then, okay.
Yeah, this is for the event.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by elder person Castner to approve. Is there a second?
I will second.
Under discussion, I do believe we did get another email from Lisa Elliott that things are still not worked out for school. And I just would like to bring that to everyone's attention, that their bus routes, because school starts September first, is still not been addressed.
So, I mean, we'll have to try to work with the police department to try to come with a, with the traffic plan, right? I'm not sure that they can open the street once it's closed, though, for school traffic. I think that the street actually becomes a-
I think we can find a reasonable solution to this.
Do you think we'll be able to?
I don't know.
I mean, rewrote.
You haven't though, it's, yeah.
We haven't yet.
You haven't, and you've had-
I think, I think once the road is closed and once that stuff-
Well, the vendors are set up, you don't want the bus driving down the middle of-
No.
In the afternoon.
No, no.
The morning, you might be able to pull it off easier, but the afternoon, I'm not sure that that works.
The school can adapt, the business can adapt, the route can adapt. I feel confident it can be done.
When does school start? School starts September first.
It's the first day.
Oh.
So who's working on it? Is anyone working?
Well, hopefully the school district.
The school district with, who, from the city?
The police department has-
Have they talked yet?
I'm gathering not.
I mean, it looks, it sounds like she's asking if there's any way they can have bus access.
All I can say, I mean, so typically, and Mr. Patrick is, former assistant chief, Patrick is here, there are typically those coordination meetings between our staff, the police department, the fire department, public works, and the school district to make sure that the traffic plans and the, all of that stuff is set up and vetted.
Yeah.
I can address some of this.
To keep the late, the road open for those three days at those times, I'm not sure that that's possible based on the old model.
I did talk to Mark from House of Harley today, too, and we did talk a little bit about this. We didn't talk about busing in particular, but he did tell me part of the delay is that because this is a corporate event, not a House of Harley event, it's been waylaid, the discussion and the determination to do this. So they are way, way, way behind in all of their discussions. He did tell me that. So I will say that much for him that-
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that's an important consideration, too, because it's not just the house.
Discussion, yeah.
Okay. All right, motion was made and seconded. Would you please call? This is for the, okay.
Elder person Collins?
Is it for what, nine, ten?
This is for eight.
This is for eight, just eight.
Just eight?
Yeah.
And read it, read it again.
So this is the approved, the special event for the hometown rally between August thirty-first and September sixth.
What are the hours?
Well, it's twenty-four, seven, because the road's shut.
Well, the outdoor special, I don't have, do you have the hours with you?
Hours, we don't have them.
Yes, I believe setup starts at eight AM, and the actual event starts at nine AM, and I believe they close down at nine PM, and-
Okay, all right.
End time is nine.
I seconded it already.
They don't stay till ten or eleven anymore.
Yeah.
Okay. You, I think you have those.
Yeah, it's probably in this. I'm sorry.
Okay, motion was made, seconded.
Right there.
I guess, I guess as a part of the discussion, so if this isn't approved, until something is worked out-
It may not be able to be worked out. There's nothing, so the question is whether or not you can reopen Leighton Avenue two times a day for three days, because it's the first week of school.
Yeah.
The likelihood of doing that-
It's not gonna work. It can't happen. It can't.
The likelihood of school closing down, because someone tested positive for COVID is probably greater.
But no, it can't. It's not gonna work.
So, but I mean-
They can't open the street.
They could take a different route. I mean, this isn't that complicated.
They're gonna have to. Okay, let's vote. They can't.
Run an extra bus.
It's not gonna work.
All right.
All right, motion was made, now we're gonna vote. I'm sorry, I have to rethink.
Elder person Collins?
Aye.
Elder person Bailey?
No.
Elder person Castner?
Aye.
Elder person Akers?
No.
Elder person Sarian?
Don't worry. Sucks to be you.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three to two. Items nine and ten are for the two events on August fourteenth and twenty-first. These are outdoor special van applications for Harley as well. I'd entertain a motion to approve those items.
Motion to approve both those items.
By elder person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by elder person Collins. Would you please, this is to approve both of them, I don't want them separately.
Oh.
This is for the, and these are from, do you have those times?
These are August.
Yeah, they're in August fourteenth and the twenty-first, but these are the-
The reasonable hours.
I'm sorry to do this to you.
Oh, I just had it.
I can't remember if these are nighttime or these are, these are the Saturday.
The reasonable hours, till five PM.
Eleven, eleven AM to five PM.
Eleven to five on a Saturday, right?
I just looked at it, yep.
Yep, okay, all right. So motion was made, second, would you call?
Elder person Collins?
Aye.
Elder person Bailey?
No.
Elder person Castner?
Aye.
Elder person Akers?
No.
Elder person Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Items for future agendas, so it's, this is the time of the year when we get a lot of stuff, and you, we get thirty to forty to fifty items on the next agenda, right?
Oh, yippee.
For August, so we may have a special common council meeting in between. I don't know what's coming up, so at this point, we don't have one.
Okay.
We may have one, okay.
What is the date of our next council meeting in August?
Seventeenth of August?
Okay.
Seventeenth, so it's earlier, and I may not be able to be at that meeting.
I actually will be at that meeting. If it was later, I would not be at that meeting.
Yeah, no.
What would be the special meeting date?
There is no special.
Well, we don't know yet.
I mean, if we have one.
There isn't any.
We don't know.
We could have it any day of the week if we have to.
So you just gotta kind of-
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can. You can at eight forty. What?
I just want to say one other thing as far as other items to consider.
Future agendas.
Right. The Ethan's Run.
Oh, yeah.
I've had constituents complain in the past about access.
On Edgerton, so-
Yeah, they have to be allowed to get out.
This one is, as I understand, the new pathway for Ethan's Run, it's completely within the park now, right? Is it still going on Edgerton?
It'll go to the high school?
Not, not the whole, up and down, like within the park. It's certainly much more revised route, there's probably ninety percent, ninety-five percent in the park.
Ninety-five percent of it's in the park.
It's about on Lake, doesn't go sixty, if it just go about, you have to get the right mileage in, go back, what kind of park goes up and back.
So is it gonna shut down the apartments on six, on Edgerton again?
I have not seen that.